Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I am William Demento and Deborah Newman, and I represent the appellant, Mary Grady, in this case. The issues before us today, there are two. What constitutes substantial reliance in dealing with a lapse issue under Chapter 40A, and whether substantial reliance will render valid a variance that has not been recorded within one year of its grant? I know this court is very familiar with the Cornell case, which you have heard, and in which this Grady case springs from.
Logically, doesn't your second issue come first?
It does, and I intend actually on dealing with that second issue first, whether substantial reliance will render valid a variance that has not been recorded. And it is our argument that there is no escaping the language in Chapter 40A, Section 11, that says that a variance shall not take effect until it is recorded. Shall not, mandatory language. And there is no escaping that. And this court recognized that in the Cornell decision. What we are dealing with here is a conveyance, a situation where a lot was split in 2004, and went on to obtain a variance in 2008. And what happened from 2008 to 2009 is the really operative section that we need to discuss.
Can I ask you a question, which is, you know, you said that the statute is really clear that the variance won't take effect until it's recorded. But what if it's, what if the variance has somehow been exercised in the sense that the building that was permitted to be built was built, and the notice, and the variance was never recorded? What's, are you saying that in those circumstances, too, the variance never took effect?
That is correct. Absolutely. It can't, nothing can take effect unless it's in existence. This language was added under Chapter 808 of the Acts of 1975 to prevent the variances from living forever as they did.
No, I mean, if it's done within the period of time, then it could have been recorded. Suppose the entire building and everything else has been accomplished within the period of time before there would otherwise be a lapse, you know? And does that mean, too, that you couldn't, you know, that that variance would somehow never have taken effect?
Absolutely. It never took effect, and the building is illegal and needs to come down.
Well, it's illegal as of the 366th day, correct?
It is.
Not up until then. It's perfectly legal.
Well, it's not perfectly legal because they obtained a building permit from someone, as it happened in this case, without providing the building inspector, the permit granting authority, with a copy of a recorded, of a variance, and a notice of recording, which must go to the building inspector under the statute for him to issue the building permit. In this particular case, the building inspector issued the permit illegally and improperly. Why is beyond my imagination.
Why did your client not appeal from the granting of the variance, as she was entitled to do?
Because she was informed that, at the time of that, that the lot was still not buildable because the ANR had never been, which was created in 2004, had never received the variance, and there was more relief necessary.
I mean, beyond the variance?
Beyond that variance, they still had required, she was told, that they still required additional relief to file an ANR, which, in fact, they got an ANR without the lots having fronted on a public way and recorded it.
Mr. Demento, what would have happened if your client did appeal, and, you know, the grant of the variance, and she had lost the appeal? What does the statute require in terms of filing the variance in the town clerk's office? It refers to from the date of the grant, but can you, do you have to record that notice while an appeal is pending? Because it could take a couple of years.
You mean, record the notice in the Registry of Deeds?
Yeah.
No, you cannot record the notice in the Registry of Deeds because the statute provides that the certification by the city clerk must say, 20 days have gone by, no appeal has been taken, or a appeal has been taken and dismissed. That makes it eligible to be recorded. That's when it becomes, and the time is told under the statute until that happens.
And we have case law that says that?
That's correct.
Does the case law also indicate whether the tolling applies to the period between the grant of the variance and the town clerk's certification that no appeal has been filed?
Absolutely. Tolling applies from the date of grant.
Well, the date of grant here was June 22nd.
That's correct.
And I think it was 20 days after that, or a month, July 22nd, or thereabouts, the town clerk certified that no appeal had been filed.
That is correct.
So do you have a year from the town clerk's certification of no appeal?
No, you have, you actually have a year to file that from the date of grant, whenever the zoning board meeting is.
Okay, well, but it can't, the rule can't be the same if an appeal, during the pendency, the appeal.
No, then it runs from that, from that day that that happens, the day it's dismissed is when it, then that is when it runs from.
The year runs from that point.
That's correct. Because you can only, it only makes sense, you can only file in the, the notice in the Registry of Deeds, which is intended to give some finality to it, once the appeal has been filed. Many appeals go two, three, four years.
And if the town clerk doesn't file the note, doesn't file any notice to the effect that no appeal has been taken?
The statute provides that it is the obligation of the permit holder to go to the town clerk and obtain the certification from the town clerk, that 20 days have passed, and that, in fact, is on the grant of the variance in this particular case, as it was in Cornell, stated right on there, that this permit shall not be effective until a certification from the city clerk is obtained and recorded, and you will not get a building permit until you provide the building inspector with a copy of that recorded permit.
Yeah, but if the, if the town clerk does not certify, refuses, just doggedly refuses to provide the notice that no appeal has been filed, what recourse is there to the grant recipient? And when does the clock, the one-year clock run?
Well, I would suspect that it would then be subject to eritamandamus, and that the clock wouldn't run until that certificate is issued, because it's impossible to start the clock without that. And
So there'd be a sort of equitable tolling?
That's correct.
What do you understand the purpose to be of Section 10's requirement that the variance shall lapse, if not exercised within one year?
The purpose of that is twofold. To put everyone on notice that a variance has been issued, everyone who may live in the neighborhood, Central Street is a crowded neighborhood in the city of Peabody, there are many abudders, there are many interested people. One of my clients is a condo owner in a three-unit condo on a piece of nonconforming property that was cut off of this property.
So she clearly knew that there was work going on?
Oh, she clearly knew. She attended the variance hearings in the first place. There's no question that she knew exactly what was going on.
So one purpose is notice, and she had notice?
And the other, the other purpose, which is just as important, is to give finality, to stop this business of 1955 variances hanging around and somewhat exercising them 40 years later. It gives finality.
But your client knew that this variance was being exercised because she could look outside her window and see the two-family being constructed?
No, she didn't see a two-family being constructed because as of the date that this permit lapsed on June 23rd, 2009, there was nothing but trees cut on that lot. She didn't see, there was no construction at all, and Judge Long in the land court doesn't say that there was. He says, he says in a footnote that he admits that there was construction activity in the form of the prep site preparation. If you take that site preparation standard and apply it to what should be more stringent building permit situation, a building permit would lapse without actual construction. One of the things that bothers me about Cornell is we seem to be lessening the standard on something which is a variance, which is a much higher standard than a special permit or a building permit.
Well, but there are two, there are two, two issues. One is getting the variance, which was obtained here, and the higher standard applies to that. That doesn't necessarily have to translate over into what happens thereafter.
Well, I suggest, Justice, that it does transfer over because of the higher standard, where variances are to be sparingly granted. Special permits under 40A9 are allowed uses under the law. They're not prohibited uses, uses as variances are.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that that, that difference comes into play in the standards that grant the allowance of a variance. And once the variance has been allowed and appealed or not appealed under those standards, it seems to me that the reason for treating variances and special permits differently subsides.
I respectfully disagree. In fact, practicing this kind of law for 40 years, I'll take a special, I'll go after a special permit any day versus a variance because of the particular standards. If you particularly look at, as part of the record, on the grant of the variance, I have never seen a variance grant with less articulation of the reasons for it. If this had been appealed in the first place, we wouldn't be here.
But your client could have appealed, couldn't she?
Absolutely, she could have. And she, and she believed without counsel, something that may, it may be true, that it requires a second variance to do it. That will have to face sometime in the future.
Did, does the record indicate whether your client knew that a building permit issued to, to the trustee, at around the time that it in fact issued, within the one year?
Oh, yes. She did know that the record, well, the record indicates that. I don't, I can't tell you, but I know that she did know that the building permit issued.
Improperly.
She didn't know it, the building permit issued improperly until she came to me in late June of 2009, when I went to see what was recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and nothing was recorded. And that is why Mrs. Grady demanded that the building inspector revoke the permit that he improperly issued because he didn't have the requisite notice of recording. We wouldn't be here if this had been recorded, I suspect, if they had done their work.
Well, if they didn't get the building permit because it hadn't been recorded.
They did get the building permit.
But if they did not, if they did not get the building permit because the variance had not been recorded, that would have been at least a second alert to them, that they have to do something.
Yes, it would, Your Honor, but it also, if they, if they gotten the building permit, they wouldn't have the leg up that they're using now to say this improperly obtained building permit is one of the basis that they're using to say, we have a right to go ahead. We have exercised by getting this illegally improper permit. So they, they don't have a properly legally issued building permit. They don't have any actual construction. What they do have is a mortgage. They had the right to get in debt. And one of my points that I wanted to raise before this court today is, what's so hard for anyone in the future, if you're going to control property in the future, of going ahead, getting a variance, whether it's proper or not, but getting the variance, getting through the appeal period, throwing a mortgage on the property, cutting some trees down, and your home? If this Grady decision, which takes a quantum leap from Cornell, is left to stand, there's no need to have any recording. Why would anyone bother to put their neighbors on notice that they have received a variance when, when they can literally sneak up at the last minute without a recording and go ahead and build something? It doesn't make any good policy. As Judge Long said, there's no solid policy. I suggest to this court, there's a very strong policy involved in this because variances are to be sparingly, grudgingly granted. They are a big relief.
Mr. Demento, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chief Justice and Associate Members of the panel. My name is Lewis J. Mugio, and I represent Arthur and Irene Stephanides, who are the trustees of the ANI Realty Trust. These proceedings began, and we are here today because Ms. Grady had knowledge of the variance and challenged the issue of the building permit. That's the procedural posture that brings us here. At the four prior stages of these proceedings, starting with the request to the building inspector, he denied the request to revoke the building permit. A justice of the Superior Court, Justice Fielden, Essex Superior Court, also denied the request to revoke the building permit.
But, but with the caveat that if you built, you may have to, yes, exactly.
The zoning board of appeals denied the request, and finally, Justice Long, in his opinion, denied the request. There has been a factual determination at four separate stages in these proceedings, that the Stephanides legally and properly exercised the rights granted to them under the variance. That factual determination is not clearly erroneous, and I don't believe the appellant is challenging the factual determination that the variance was properly exercised.
Does the record indicate why they didn't record the variance where the, where the variance says right on it, that it's no good unless it's recorded?
At trial, I believe Mr. Stephanides testified he did not know. He hired zoning counsel, who prosecuted the variance, and he assumed that zoning counsel would proceed with the recording of the variance. The first time he became aware that the variance was not recorded was, I believe, in late June, when Ms. Grady sent notice, copy of the notice requesting revocation. At trial, he testified that he sent his wife to the Registry of Deeds, and the variance was recorded eight days late. So as I see the issue before the court, it's not a, we're not going to revisit the facts. I think the facts are that the Stephanides exercised and substantially relied upon the variance. The issue, as Judge Long found.
Well, I mean, there is an issue about exercising because minus the footnote in Cornell, exercise means you, you record the, the variance, right?
The issue is, the Section 11, which deals with recording, doesn't say it has to be recorded in one year. The lapse statute, Section 10, says you must exercise your rights under the variance. The statutes are there, but they're not tied together. So I think that the issue before this court is whether an eight-day late recording would void a variance upon which a permit holder substantially relied.
What about a 30-day delay?
I would suggest that the lapse really relates to a factual determination as to what steps the permit holder took in exercising the rights under the variance.
So I think that was the hypothetical that Justice Botzford had posed to your brother. You go ahead and build a house, and let me add a little exaggeration, but you build a house, and two years later, they figure out that the variance had never been recorded. What happened? What's the result there?
That's the McDermott case. In McDermott, a special permit was issued.
Yeah, but this is a variance. What, what?
The reasoning in McDermott said special use, or substantial use and exercise trumps the recording requirement. I guess we have to do, look at what the purpose of recording of variance is. And the purpose of recording of variance is to give notice. Now, the person most aggrieved here is Mary Grady. Mary Grady attended the variance hearing. Mary Grady got notice of the clerk, she attended, objected. She got notice of the variance. From the time the variance was granted, she had the Peabody police at the Stephanides' premises trying to stop construction. She knew. Unfortunately for her, she didn't take a timely appeal. Her request to the building inspector to revoke the building permit was her end around on her failure to timely appeal the variance. So
Let me interrupt you for a moment, just to, to get some background information. Do you agree that the building permit was issued without being provided with a variance?
I agree that the building permit was issued prior to the recording of the variance.
Well, explain that a little bit. Ordinarily, what, I mean, obviously, the town knew that the variance had been granted. Obviously, the building commissioner, whatever, was aware that the variance had been granted.
Correct.
What ordinarily does one do? Does one bring a certified copy of the recorded variance to get a building permit?
What I understand happened is the general contractor, armed with the variance, went to the building inspector's office with whatever plans, applied for the building permit, paid, I think, an $8,000 fee, and the building permit was granted.
But doesn't the statute require the proponent of the variance, or the holder of the variance, to provide the building inspector with proof that it's been recorded?
It does, Your Honor.
And that didn't happen?
It, it didn't happen. So the issue here is whether the late recording, and again, I say late, because I'm not sure how the statutes are tied in, it's whether the recording eight days after the one year voids a variance. And on these facts factually, I don't think there's any question, I don't really think the appellant is arguing, that in this case there was not sufficient exercise of the variance. So let me go back, because I guess what this case turns on is Footnote 7 in Cornell. And this case is factually distinguishable from Cornell. First of all, in Cornell, within the one-year period, there was no application made by Cornell for the building permit. He did certain things as prerequisites to obtaining a building permit. Had to get approval from ConCon subdivision approval. So within that one year, he did not apply for a building permit. In Cornell, there was an expenditure of about $15,000 during the period of time. Most importantly, in Cornell, the building permit was applied for, I think it was 15 months after the variance was issued. And lastly, in Cornell, when the local board would not extend the variance, he then went and recorded the variance 22 months after the grant. Those are the facts in Cornell.
How much weight should we give to the fact that there's a building permit here that shouldn't have been issued?
I think the court should give great weight to the fact that the building permit was issued.
But it was improperly issued. It shouldn't, it shouldn't have been issued. Isn't that right? I mean, without the recording of the variance, the building inspector was mistaken in issuing it. It shouldn't have been issued.
Technically, it should not, it was issued, and I guess we've got, I guess we get into the equitable tolling issue, which is what I understand Footnote 7 in Cornell is all about. That's not something, it's something that the trustees should have known. It's something the general contractor who applied for the building permit should have known. They didn't know. They got a building permit from the city of Peabody. They took the building permit. They went to the community credit union, borrowed $350,000, put a mortgage on their property, signed a construction contract with Alpine Engineering for $350,000. In reliance upon that building permit, they began to build. Mr. Demento suggests they weren't building. They cleared trees, they excavated, all of which was known to Ms. Grady.
I take it they also hired some sort of architect, as required specifically by the city?
They had hired the architect early on to do the plans for the duplex, but then after the variance was issued, the plans were refined, and they began spending more and more money.
Didn't the city require them to hire a certain type of architect?
Yes, it was a controlled project, because it was duplex. So in answer to Justice Lang's question, yes, it should have been recorded. It wasn't, but they had a document from the city. Mr. Stephanides is not a lawyer, and unfortunately for him, after the variance was issued, he didn't have counsel guiding him. The first time he had any awareness that the variance needed to be recorded was late June. And again, I believe that we had some timing over the holiday weekend. He contacted my office, and he's, I
So if you prevail, what's, what's the rule that this case would stand for? Would it say you really don't have to comply with the rule on variance being recorded for, if you, if you're ignorant, or if you don't know, if you're not a lawyer, then it's okay?
This case is very fact-specific. For this court to affirm Justice Long's opinion, it's, this case is not going to open the floodgates, as Mr. Demento suggests. We have very unique facts here. We have very specific facts that, number one, that show that the Stephanides didn't know. They didn't do anything wrong willfully. Number two, they took significant and dramatic steps to exercise and relied on that variance. And here, the timing, I think, is very significant. As soon as they knew, they recorded. And again, I don't know where the bright line is, whether it's a 30-day. I'm not suggesting that, based upon the specific facts in this case, that everyone who gets a variance and doesn't record it shouldn't have a building permit. This case is very fact-specific. And again, we have to look at why we have recording. I started with Ms. Grady. She had notice. Lenders need notice. Well, in this case, as part of the due diligence in obtaining the construction loan, the variance was provided to the lender. The town clerk certainly had notice because the building permit was issued. So my feel on this case is, on the very specific facts of this case, this is the type of case that this court alluded to in Footnote 7. It doesn't establish a broad-ranging rule of law. But what, what I want to point out is, the lapse statute doesn't refer to the one-year rule.
Your client, let me just shift slightly. Your client got a, had a surveyor come and got an ANR plan.
Yes.
Did the ANR plan say on it that the rear lot, the one that we're talking about now?
Lot B, Your Honor.
Lot B, that it was not a building lot?
I believe that was in 2004, and I, it was, well, it was not buildable because they needed a variance.
Yeah, but did it say that on the plan itself?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
Now, you say that this is fact-based, and of course it is, but it sounds as if the two essential elements that you're focusing on is notice to the complainant and the fact that you got a building permit, which you shouldn't have gotten. You know, are those essentially the two things which distinguish this case from others?
You know, are those essentially the two things which distinguish this case from others?
I think there are more facts here on the substantial reliance.
But all the reliance that you describe rests on the fact that they could waive a building permit and say, now I can get a loan, now I can hire somebody. If they were to have done that before they had gotten the building permit, would you say that there was still reliance, because the, the building commissioner is supposed to have said, come back to me with a recorded variance?
I think the issuance and use of the building permit within the one-year period of time is what's significant. And again, the lapse provision doesn't say anything about recording. The Section 10 says if you don't exercise your rights, it lapses. It doesn't say when. Section 11 says the variance should be recorded. It doesn't say when it has to be recorded.
Well, except that, well, I mean, Cornell sort of addresses that issue, but don't you also rely on the fact that it was only eight days after the year?
I think in terms of the equitable tolling doctrine, which I think Judge, I think that's significant. That's why in response to Justice Ireland's questions, this is a very fact-specific case. I don't think there's going to be many cases that have these type of facts.
Well, counsel, we'll have to leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honors.